Madam Speaker, this is Madam Speaker. When we left off, Senator Taitkou, you had the floor, and we had taken a recess for some amendments.
This is my Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I thank the Senator from Chalampago for reading the letter that came from Department of Public Social Services addressed to the author of this legislation and providing certain concerns and recommendations into the legislation. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 181 back to the committee to allow the opportunity for this bill to have the round table it needs to put together sound, solid, you know, legislation that we can all feel comfortable with for an adoption agency and for any future agencies that want to come to Guam and set up shop on Guam. So I ask my colleagues, in light of this information provided by Public Health who oversees adoption agency, that this be sent back to committee for reconsideration on changes to it and around table to bring more people to the table. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, is there an objection? There's an objection on the motion. So all in favor of the motion to refer the bill back to committee, please raise your Motion fails.
Then, Madam Speaker, I have a couple more amendments that I mentioned earlier, and I'd like to proffer my First Amendment. It is on the Google Drive. And this will be on page nine. And it's a new Section 4222 of Chapter 4, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, which is hereby added to read. Now, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Speaker, Title 19, Chapter 4, is titled "Children by Adoption", and the purpose for this Title 19 is, the purpose of this article is to protect and promote the welfare of children, natural and thereby promote the parents' well and parents' promote the welfare of the territory of Guam. So this is what Title 19 in this section indicates. And my amendment, Madam Speaker, would be to add a new 4222, and it would read, "License Necessary." Except in relative adoptions, no person or entity shall provide or conduct adoption services or operate an adoption agency without a license issued by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. The Department of Public Health and Social Services shall promulgate rules and regulations pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Law 5 GCA, Chapter 9, establishing the requirements for licensing of a person or entity providing or conducting adoption services or promoting an adoption agency. So, Madam Speaker, this gives an opportunity for Public Health and, I believe, to work with Department of Revenue and Taxation to establish these rules and regulations when it comes, when anyone who wants to open an adoption agency comes forward. So I ask for my colleagues' support, again, in lieu of the letter that was sent to the author of this legislation. I think it's important that we hear what they have to say, and we did. We've been, for the last two days, asking that someone come forward, and they have. And I think it's something that we cannot turn a blind eye to. We can't just sit back and just let it go the way it is right now. We've been given forewarning, all of us. We can't turn the blind eye. It's plain and simple. I mean, I've been standing up here talking about the accountability and transparency for a day and a half, I think. And there are sections in here that are really concerning to Department of Public Health and Social Services. So I ask my colleagues to please consider at least this amendment to allow these rules and regulations to be put into place. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, this amendment is to add a new Section 4222 of Chapter 4, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, on the new section amendment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on that amendment? Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. I think it's important to note that the term "adoption agency" is not even defined in GCA. And I believe that's one of the things that needs to be addressed when we're talking about strengthening this bill. I do, I see the need on both sides. I see the need that there is a need for adoption of, it was mentioned earlier, I think yesterday, that there is a ward of babies born from meth mothers, and there's a huge need for the adoption of those babies. And I understand that need. But I also see the need for safeguarding the process. The fact that adoption agency is not even defined, and then we're giving them these powers with Bill 108 to decide the placement, the permanent placement of babies and others is problematic. I think this resolution, I'm sorry, this amendment at least tries to address the deficiency in the bill. We heard from previous testimony that really what duly licensed is really based on DRT's licensing of a business to operate in order to collect GRTs. As I understand, DRT doesn't have that capacity to really find, have a closer look at what these charters represent or say. And it's really up to an agency like Department of Public Health to have that. They have that expertise to see, you know, what's contained in these charters and whether it meets muster. It's important to also note that other states, like California, Delaware, they mandate strict guidelines for adoption agencies to operate in their state. It includes a laundry list of requirements for licensure, which include background checks, local residency, pre-compliance inspections prior to licensure. This is needed in addition to a business license for collecting GRTs. Further, these states require multiple inspections throughout the year of these agencies and upon renewal of their license. This is the type of license that would be issued by the Department of Public Health and in addition to the business license from DRT. Many websites assisting with the navigation of adoption recommend, if using an adoption agency, that it be nationally or locally licensed. Being licensed or certified means that an adoption professional can perform adoption services in the state in which they are licensed and in accordance with the state's laws, which creates an extra layer of safety and dependability for their clients. So again, there is no licensing of these adoption agencies currently in statute. And I think when we're creating these laws, rules, we must actually start with the statute itself. I think this is one of the comments that were made earlier, that we're putting the cart before the horse. A lot of these changes are made in GAR, which is authorized by our statutes, and we need to change the statute first, starting with the definition, creating a definition of an adoption agency. So I think this is an important amendment, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in objection to this amendment, not because I don't believe in rules and regulations, but because this language is drafted as woefully inadequate, Madam Speaker. I'm not sure if my colleagues are familiar with the current licensing requirements for childcare facilities on Guam. When you're talking about the creation of a new license, you are now contemplating the establishment of a new division filled with licensing workers to oversee the issuance Before I begin, I want to just raise a point with regard to no definition of adoption agencies. 19 GCA Personal Relations, Chapter 13, Child Protective Act has, in Section 13101, definitions to include authorized agency under subsection C. Further, as I noted in my opening statement, the Guam Administrative Rules under 26GAR, Article 3, Chapter 1, in the section entitled "Adoption Policies and Control," the word "agency" is used 18 times throughout the article. So agencies are, in fact, recognized. We know that the requirement of licensing would require a significant level of resources because the CPS director had said so. In an interview dated April 21, 2021, Director Brennan stated to the media, "The Bureau of Social Services is already overwhelmed. We are having trouble recruiting, you know. So I believe in the licensing of childcare facilities. But we have one licensing worker, one licensing worker and over 40 childcare facilities to supervise and to go out and to make checks on. And that, you know, that is a struggle." So notwithstanding the fact that this amendment lacks any sort of fiscal analysis, this amendment also provides no appropriation and number on what it would cost to grant Public Health the resources it needs to do this. Madam Speaker, the current rules and regulations for licensed childcare facilities and group childcare homes are extensive, and they should be because these facilities actually house or shelter children. Adoption agencies don't. Adoption agencies would facilitate placement with public health-approved homes. So if an agency is housing children, you're no longer a child placement facility, you are a childcare facility. So why would we need to create a new licensing process for adoption agencies? What guidelines does this amendment allow for that are not already laid out in Article 2, Chapter 4, Title 19 of Guam Code Annotated, in Article 3, Chapter 1, Titles 26 of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations? Or what about the Child Protective Act? It's extensive. It's exhaustive. This is why my and Director Brennan's compromise works. Mandating an annual audit that ensures adoption agencies comply with current adoption laws serves as a compromise without overburdening Public Health to establish new requirements for an already existent adoption agency. It's no secret that Deputy Director Uggan is against this bill. His letter that was read into the record simply regurgitates everything he has said at the public hearing. These were the same issues that were discussed with the director overseeing child protective Her letter is on the record. Her statement in support is on the record. But I want to remind my colleagues that this is the reason why CPS is no longer under the administrative custody of Public Health. 1,000 reasons, in fact. As the governor declared when she signed the executive order transferring it to DYA, nearly 1,000 cases went unreviewed, and too many children did not get the help they needed under Public Health. So what makes us think they will follow through on an exhaustive mandate like this? And why should children have to wait to be adopted until then? Madam Speaker, I strongly object to this amendment for pretending to be something it's It will be failed bureaucracy wearing safeguard clothing. I struck a balance with Child Protective Services addressing all their concerns. It's on the record from their director what their position is.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment? The amendment, again, to add Section 4222. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly want to speak in favor of this amendment, and contrary to the previous speaker and the sponsor of this bill, I don't think we should look at the problems that exist. I think we should be asking why the problems exist. I don't know beyond the discussion of an executive order why the responsibilities were taken away from Public Health. We are aware, of course, that there were a number of cases that were backlogged. How and why there were backlog, I don't know. Maybe someone in here can enlighten us as to why that was the case, because Public Health certainly has had this responsibility for many years. I think we need to look at what the root of the problem is, rather than trying to gloss it over and say, oh, well, I discussed it with the director and it's all good. Because the director, who has had this additional responsibility through executive order, tasked, all of a sudden, this is where it begins and ends, I don't agree. I don't agree because these additional requirements are going to put additional requirements, and we should somehow ignore them and not put them in place, particularly when we're dealing with something as important as children in this community. It's such resistance, Madam Speaker, is what I sense on this floor, to want to amend or bend to accommodate what should be something we shouldn't even be arguing about, the need for an additional layer of review so that we have some structure that actually licenses adoption agencies. What is so out of the box about that? Something that in many other jurisdictions through the government is regulated. To say, oh, we're going to just have these annual inspections, and they have to do this and that according to this section and that section of the law, and we just go on and read all the sections of the law, and that should somehow give us some comfort? I don't have comfort level with that. I don't know if the people of Guam have comfort level of that, because we've had our own discussions, and this is what we've decided. That's why we discuss and deliberate this issue. I'm not satisfied with this. Even if this bill passes, I'm not satisfied. You probably should look at other amendments to change it and find out exactly what is going on. I don't diss the presentation and the letter made by, you know, the Deputy Mr. Uggan, Terry. I've known him for many, many, over 33 years now, I've known Terry Uggan. And I've never discussed this issue with him. The first I saw and the first I read of his letter was when I was asked to read it this earlier today before our lunch break. But he brings up some very legitimate concerns, someone who's worked in the system, someone who is a foster parent, who knows the system, who's worked in it for many years, who's worked in it to help our children out in the community. I don't think that should be put aside so lightly. I think he put a lot of time and thought into what he wrote, and a lot of the things he raised are issues we've raised. And I've had no communication with him. I've got his number, but I've not discussed it with him. But I think we should, and I'm going to mention it again, there should have been further deliberation on this bill so that these questions can be asked and answered to a level of comfort, which is really, Madam Speaker, what I think we'd like to see is a level of comfort, that there is a licensure structure to the creation and existence of adoption agencies. We do this with so many other things. We deal with rules and regulations with so many other things in this government. But, boy, when we're talking about children, oh, let's just remove all those requirements because they're burdensome, they're cumbersome, they're slowing down the process. There's nobody here that can guarantee everything's going to work well. We're human, and we're imperfect as such. That's why we create laws. That's why we exist, so that our society and our community has structure, it has requirements that we need to live and abide by. We're assuming in most cases to protect our better interests, even though sometimes I debate with myself how much government should be involved in our everyday lives. But in this particular case, where we have children that, for whatever circumstance, end up being the responsibility of the government, I simply would want to see that if these children are going to be handed over to adoption agencies, that there's requirements that adoption agencies need to meet. And I just don't think it's this, what is being proposed for that, the lack thereof, requirements for permitting or licensing of an adoption agency, that we should simply gloss that over. I really don't think we should simply just let it go. We should have been here having a discussion as to why we are in the situation that we are. If we don't have enough personnel at Public Health to assist, and by all means, my colleagues, we will be here shortly to deal with the budget. Stand up and be counted. Put your money where your mouth is and invest it in the things that really matter in this community, because you have the power to do it. But to use that as a reason not, a reason not to require standards of adoption agencies on Guam, as if it's somehow beyond us, as if executive orders are so sacred, the governor decided through executive order, and, oh, and we who are the lawmakers should just sit on the sidelines and watch the parade go by, when our very job is to legislate. How disappointing. How disappointing. Because we have to have our way. We have to have our way. This is how we want it. Well, I don't agree, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, stand up and be counted, and by all means, when the budget for Public Health comes, I certainly look forward to hearing the chorus in this legislature. Hopefully, you're keeping track of the budget hearings that most members of this legislature don't even give the time of day to attend. Let's be sanctimonious in our own sense of self-importance. But by all means, the inefficiencies of the government should never be a reason as to why we don't put standards for any adoption agency. Perhaps OHLA is be the ideal partner. I have no objections to that. But I think OHLA, as well as any other adoption agency that may want to create themselves or exist to be licensed on Guam, should have standards, requirements, rules and regulations and procedures that they need to follow. That is simply all that is being asked for here, and such resistance to that. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my, oh, my. We let so many other least important things, we hold a wall up to it, but something like this that shouldn't even require a second thought, oh, by all means, let's put those protectors measures in place so that we can all have a comfort level, and we can all move forward. But no. No, we can't do that because the government's so bureaucratic. And whose shoulders does that problem fall on? How disappointing, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment, which will probably get voted down again. But at least the people out there will know where your priorities are, how easy it is to simply put requirements for licensure for an adoption agency. But no, we won't do it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I hope the people keep track of all the wonderful things we're doing for them.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment? We will allow the sponsor to close on the amendment.
This is Madam Speaker for the opportunity, and, you know, I'd like to thank those who spoke in support of this measure, in support of transparency, accountability, and most of all, the safety of our children on this island. You know, tonight, when I go to bed, I will close my eyes knowing that I tried and did the right thing. I will have a good conscience when I go to sleep tonight. Because I know I stood up here and fought for our island to ensure responsibility that has been given to us, voted by the people of Guam, that I did everything I could possible to ensure the safety of our children here. I wonder if my colleagues can say the same when they close their eyes tonight. Madam Speaker, in the letter that was written by the Deputy Director of Public Health, who's been there for years, decades, and it says here that even "the record numbered of children in foster care is reflective of social changes brought on by substance abuse, babies testing positive for drug exposure, homelessness, issues of mental health, unemployment, substance, domestic violence, often triggered by financial hardship and lack of coping skills, and teen pregnancy, sexual assault. Of the 432 children in foster care, zero infants were available for adoption." There is no rush. Did you hear that? It said zero. Now, I can honestly say if the numbers were huge, of course, we need to place these children somewhere, these babies, somewhere. But the number is zero. Like my colleague said, what is the rush? This gives this body the opportunity to work with the agencies, to incorporate rules and regulations put in place, and for us to say, oh, it's going to be tedious and long. Well, remember, there was a type of business on Guam, and times are changing. More things are happening on this island. For instance, Stroll Guam, an example, it's Uber, it's Uber on Guam. But we didn't have any laws or regulations or licensing for Uber, a type of Uber business. But it was created. And that's what we're going to do here. And I think there's something else that's going to come up later on in the future, that we don't have rules and regulations for. But it's our responsibility to make sure that what, whoever opens a business here on Guam, that it's done safely, properly, that we vetted every angle out to protect our island in every way, health, environment. Zero infants for adoption. Madam Speaker, I know that we've been at this for a while, but like I said, I'm standing up here fighting for, I think, what we need on this island to help our people. And, you know, regardless of I need it, it's the right thing to do. It's the responsible way of being a senator. It's the responsible way of being a senator. It's our job. So I humbly ask, humbly ask my colleagues to think about this, please. Think about when you close your eyes tonight and sleep. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there any objection? There's an objection on the amendment to add a new section 4222. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Taiti, you are recognized.
My next amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page nine. It is on the Google Drive for my colleagues to review. And its effective date. "This act shall not be effective until the Department of Public Health Social Services promulgate rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law 5 GCA Chapter 9, establishing the requirements of the licensing of a person or entity providing or conducting adoption services or operating an adoption agency." That's what the amendment says. And I ask my colleagues to please support this. If it costs any additional funding, well, I'm pretty sure we can find some funding to pay for promulgating rules and regulations. It's a very simple amendment to allow this to go through. Hopefully, if this goes through, that we'll be able to also move into another amendment that will allow it, if needed. But for now, Madam Speaker, it talks about an effective date. And that's, that's it for now. Allow my colleagues to speak.
Senator, did you read the amendment? Could you please read?
Sure. It's on page nine, and it's, it's the effective date, a new section to be incorporated in there. "This act shall not be affected, shall not be affected until the Department of Public Health and Social Services promulgate rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law 5 GCA Chapter 9, establishing the requirements of the licensing of a person or entity providing or conducting adoption services or operating as an adoption agency."
All right. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the amendment, on the effective date? Senator, Senator Brown? Senator Torres, you are recognized. Senator Torres is yielding.
Pardon me, Madam Speaker, I thought you recognized another colleague. That's why I didn't respond right away. I'd like to rise in opposition to this amendment, similar, for similar reasons that I objected to the last amendment. My colleagues should be familiar with current licensing requirements for childcare facilities on Guam. When you're talking about the creation of a new licensure, now contemplating the establishment of a new division filled with licensing workers to oversee the issuance process. This requirement would, would need a significant level of resources that the director has pointed out in the media, most recently in an interview dated October, April 21, 2021, where she described the Bureau of Social Services as being overwhelmed, having trouble recruiting. She mentioned at the time that the licensing of childcare facilities, they only have one licensing worker, one worker in over 40 childcare facilities to supervise and to go out and make checks on, that they're struggling. Notwithstanding the fact that this amendment, again, lacks any sort of fiscal analysis, this amendment also provides no appropriation and number on what it would cost to grant Public Health the resources it needs to do this. I don't believe it's necessary to create new licensing process for adoption agencies. Because the guidelines that this amendment would allow for are already laid out, Madam Speaker, and I just keep reiterating, there is no absence of guidelines, rules and regulations. They are, again, in Title 19, Chapter 4, Article 2, Title 26, Chapter 1, Article 3 of the GARR, and in the Child Protective Act. So I understand the logic behind this, but my, my point to all this is if, if you are going to go down the road of creating a new bureau and all of that, then that, that is a matter that is far beyond what we can do at this point because there are no, it's a whole different issue, it's a whole different new bureau, and it's a condition that has to be addressed separately, not in this instance. But mostly, I just disagree with the idea that you would have to establish rules and regs where, I believe, rules and regs are already in place. We can't keep reiterating that point. And there are adoptions on Guam, Madam Speaker. There are an average of 40 to 50 cases annually of adoptions on Guam of infants. So that statement is not entirely accurate. But back to my point, I was rising in objection of the amendment.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And then it brings me back to where we started. Had a follow-up discussion occurred with regards to this piece of legislation, there wasn't such a mad rush to get this on the floor. I think those are questions that could have been asked and discussed with Department of Public Health, not just for our edification, but certainly for the public in understanding what the process and challenges are that Public Health is facing. None of these issues that have been raised are insurmountable. I mean, I don't think it's going to be that major and exorbitant ability. I mean, there are many other frameworks of adoption agency regulations throughout the states that can be looked at and referenced. We're asking Public Health to put that recommendation together and put it through the normal process. That's not insurmountable either. Citations were made of law, none of those citations really reference what the regulatory requirements or the framework or structures are in our laws for an adoption agency. One has never formally existed, and yes, adoptions occur on Guam. Adoptions occur on Guam. Nobody's arguing that point. But this sets up an additional engagement that gives them custody of children, of our children. And I would like to have some comfort level of knowing of who these individuals are that are working in this adoption agency, that they went through background checks, that they are indeed upstanding people in our community, that we can hand over our children in the interim, that their agenda is the public agenda of wanting to ensure that these children are getting into safe, good, healthy, happy homes. I don't, still, this still doesn't change the reality of that, passing this bill, which probably, colleagues, if you choose to sit back and do nothing more about it and allow this amendment to fail again, with all the other amendments that simply ask for putting these structures in place. I don't think any of that is insurmountable. And yet, we want to do this, but we don't even want to get to the core issues of what's affecting the very agency that has oversight, that has had direct jurisdiction over the custody of these children, maintains the custody of these children until the court decides otherwise. But we don't want to do that. Goodness, we're talking about, there's nothing else we're going to debate on this floor this week that is probably going to be more important. But the resistance, again, to having a process, a regulatory process of setting up an adoption agency and having them meet requirements. You know, you want to do an audit, what are you doing an audit to? What standards are you doing it towards? We know how we do financial audits in the government of Guam. But we have such resistance to putting in a structure that everyone knows these are the requirements, they can go and reference it. If I want to go set up an adoption agency, then I at least will know what those requirements are that I need to meet because I assume I'm having in my custody for a period of time the most precious resource on Guam. But no, we're going to reference requirements in the law related to the adoption process, not specifically to the structure and requirements and regulation of an adoption agency. Amazing. Again, Madam Speaker, the fact, I, I've been sitting here for the last six months watching this process, trying to get in the groove of this legislature, because certainly, I've been gone a while. Wow, they just, I often get asked, how do you like being in the legislature again? Gosh, I got a big question mark in my mind. It's moments like this, I wonder. I really have to wonder. Because sometimes doing the right thing seems so hard. Just seems so incredibly hard. You know, colleagues, I'm sure it's all important to have our bills and see, hey, look, my dear people of Guam, what I've done for you. But when the actual practice with what actually gets implemented really doesn't live up to that, you got to wonder. It's probably why we're not the most popular people in town. Maybe individually we are. Collectively, as a body legislature, we're not that popular. I wonder why. I think to totally dismiss, dismiss, dis, dismiss, the concerns that have been raised by the deputy of Public Health, and not even entertain a single amendment here because we're given assurances that, oh, those things are taken care of. I don't feel it. I really don't feel it. Otherwise, I don't think I'd be up here repeatedly commenting on this issue. The fact that my colleagues here seem inclined to not require it, I'm dumbfounded. Because I don't think this issue will go away. If this bill passes without this requirement in it, I think this issue, like medical malpractice, can be round a while. Maybe we need to take this issue on the road, see what the people really feel about it. Because there's no reason, Madam Speaker, of this full-time, full-time Guam legislature. We could have not had this discussion and engagement so that questions and concerns, and certainly I had them, I was hoping that we would follow up with a roundtable discussion so that I could ask questions and get feedback and see, is this the way to go, or what recommendations would they have? How can we better this process? I'm not against the bill. But without these requirements in it, I'd have a heck of a hard time voting for it. Maybe my vote doesn't matter, you know, I'm only one. But I just, I'm dumbfounded. We sit here and we will not even address ensuring that an adoption agency meets requirements and standards that we feel as a community need to be met, that should be met, so that we have a comfort level that the individuals that are operating this adoption agency are doing it in accordance with guidelines that we have publicly put forth and determined that these are the guidelines that this agency or agencies should exist under. Gosh, we do that with so many other things. But we're not going to do it for children, our children in this community. Colleagues, you better think deep and hard. I don't think this is a casual issue. You know, we go, I'm, my people, we're here to represent you, to do all the good and wonderful things, please vote for me. And when the time comes to stand up and be counted, we're silent. Absolutely, gosh, it's so quiet in here, I don't even hear anybody gossiping on the side. We're so silent. And I, I don't think the request of what we're making is so incredibly insurmountable. And then we're going to use the excuse of bureaucracy of the government as the reason why we shouldn't have these standards in place. Then why don't we get rid of every other regulation we have in the government? Because we're undermanned. My goodness, we can't do it for children, we can't do it for innocent children that we want to ensure we're taking from maybe what may be a very unfortunate situation to putting them in a good, happy, healthy situation with a loving and caring family. We're human, human people who have frailties and limitations. Why do we have laws in the first place? To keep us, hopefully, from doing what we otherwise might do if we didn't have a restriction? To have a civilized society? That's why we're here. I mean, I've always been dumbfounded, Madam Speaker, why do we spend so much time changing, adding, amending laws on Guam for this little community that we live in? We have enough laws to keep us busy every month in session. And yet, when it comes to protecting our children, that we talk so much that we care about, to put an additional layer there that is pretty standard and routine for every other jurisdiction problem in the United States of good old America, but we won't do it for Guam, we won't do it for our Guam children. Maybe if someone else proposed this amendment, other than the current sponsor, maybe you would have voted for it, not even thought twice about it. I hope you're not letting your biases, I hope there aren't biases of that. But my goodness, for something as simple as this requirement, we refuse to do it. We're digging our heels down and we're refusing to do it. How sad, how unfortunate. Because this is what matters, colleagues, this is the stuff that matters. And I can't see why we'd go 90% of the way and not simply want to complete the process by putting these protective measures in. Because nobody in here, not a single soul in here, can guarantee that this process will happen without fail. Because there's no structure to hold it up to. And we see it every single day, the frailties of our human existence. We see it in abuse of children, we see it in parents that don't take care of their children for whatever reason. We see it in the need that these children need to be placed in a good and safe and caring home and environment. I think if we want to have some comfort level in doing that, that by all means, we should have regulations that adoption agencies are required to follow, and not simply agreements and letters from directors. I, I take a lot of credence with what Terry Ugin has provided, because I've known Terry for, gosh, 33 years now. But we're just going to ignore that, right? Some of us are just simply going to ignore that. And we're just going to proceed on our merry little way. It's unfortunate, Madam Speaker, but I have to tell you, if this does pass, I, I don't think this issue's going to go away. I think this issue's been coming a bigger debate. I certainly would be more than happy to engage in that. Because if I can't do it here among my colleagues in the Guam Legislature, then maybe I need the people of Guam to be aware of this. This is a shame. It's a shame that we will not even put protective measures in place because the author simply doesn't want it. You know, there are moments when you're in office, these are one of those moments, my colleagues. You don't want to stand up and be counted to have that level of comfort. Well, as the previous sponsor, the speaker and sponsor of this amendment said, well, you know, hopefully, we all sleep well at night. Hopefully, you all sleep well at night. But I stand in support of this. And when all is said and done, I'm still going to stand in support of the requirement. Perhaps we need to introduce another bill to put this in place so that we can have the public discussion with Public Health and other interested parties in our community to come forth and actually testify on this issue, so we can have the input that we've been asking for, and not pass legislation just based on our own desire to move legislation forward without having the key parties in our government engage fully in that discussion. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else wishing to comment on the amendment? Speaker Trelawney, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. And I want to be very clear, the amendment is going to say for this bill that it will not be effective until the Department of Public Health promulgates rules establishing the requirements for the licensing of adoption services or adoption agencies. I find that absolutely reasonable, and in fact, I find it imperative. I think it's negligent of us not to do that. Because although we might like a certain adoption agency that has presented themselves, it's been repeated all morning, we cannot control the types of adoption agencies that are going to, to present themselves, to take custody of children on Guam, and determine placement. That is something, I believe, that is sacred, that we have reserved for public health. That is something, I believe, that is sacred, that we have reserved for public health, and that I am very confident that public health, if given an opportunity to do rules and regulations, will be able to come to the same conclusion that maybe members of this body have, that there is a one adoption agency that they like, that they want to favor, that they want to support. That's fine, and we can do that, and I believe, but it should be public health that comes to that decision, weighing everything that they need to weigh, especially because the rules are not apparent before us. And this adoption agency has, I've met with them, and they've, you know, promised they are licensed in Hawaii, you know, and now they're coming to Guam, they want to help us, and that might be all fine. But I, but I just think, as a matter of policy, we don't just do that because we like people, we do it based on rules and regulations, and have they met our rules and regulations? Have they been, you know, certified, licensed, all of that here on Guam pursuant to what we need? The other reason is because public health has asked us. They have brought it to our attention, and I'm quoting a quote from their letter now, that they are not aware, well, this is from the deputy director of public health, Mr. Terry Ugin, and he spends a large part of his letter reminding us of his credentials in this area. And his concerns, which echo ours, which echo the sponsors of the bill, which echoes all of us. We are all concerned for the children of Guam, we all want to reduce trauma for these children from being moved home to home. But I think we need to work together on this. This is something we have to agree on. And if we're not agreeing, then there seems something wrong. And I think if we can't agree with public health, then I think there's something very wrong. Public health has, in their letter, said, I am not aware of existing rules and regulations for adoption agencies to be licensed on Guam. They point out the licensing by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. They suggest there's a process that needs to be developed, which will license private adoption agencies in order to regulate them. Now, I want to commend the sponsor of the bill for the amendments to the bill that were added at the suggestion of Melanie, Director Brennan. Those are good. They add that public health will have the ability to audit adoption agencies if this bill passes, and if public health is forced to accept adoption agencies without any other kind of requirements, that they are going to audit them. And this allows for an annual audit, and it also allows for that if they don't, they're not in compliance with the provisions of Title 19, or any other applicable local, state, federal law, any written agreements with the Guam Bureau. It anticipates that they're going to have a written agreement. And this is another reason why rules and regulations are going to help public health to be consistent with all potential adoption agencies, and not to, you know, put rules on one that they don't put on another. That's what rules and regulations do for all of us in society, they make us consistent, they make everyone treated fairly, and they give everyone notice of how you will be graded, so to say, or judged, or, you know, determined to be in compliance or not. But interestingly, so they talk about noncompliance, they're going to be given a notice if they're not in compliance according to the changes that were made to the bill, and they will be, you know, given so much time to complete a plan of how they're going to become in compliance. They get six months after completion of the audit to complete the plan of action to demonstrate that it is, we're talking about children, the most vulnerable children, in fact. There, I don't see in these amendments that were added at the suggestion of Director Brennan, any penalties for noncompliance. In fact, we give them a lot of time to remedy their noncompliance, but really no penalty. We're still kind of stuck with that adoption agency that's been noncompliant for six months. And that's another reason for rules and regulations, because we need, if we need penalties, then we need penalties. And if public health is going to be, you know, given the strength, the authority to say, no, we're not going to do business with you, you're not going to be touching these babies because you are not compliant, or because we found something wrong in the audit, we're going to have to give them this tool, this rules and regulations tool, so they can flush that out, so they can lay it all out, how they're going to determine whether adoption agencies, I, I, when I said earlier that there can be a harmony of interest, I truly believed that, that if we just allowed public health and this adoption agency to work with each other, why shouldn't there be a harmony of interest? If everybody had the same interest in mind? If public health is looking for families to adopt children, which actually I don't believe, because I believe we have a lot of families who want children here, who are not able to have children, who would like to adopt children, but we have, we don't have, as was mentioned earlier, a, an overflowing amount of babies who are being put up for adoption. We have children who are in emergency situations, and that's a huge difference. But I don't see any reason why public health cannot work with this adoption agency that has presented itself to public health, that public health cannot determine, you know, that they approve of the way they do things, that public health cannot determine that we approve the standards of the homes that you are, you know, proposing, and public health will come to that confidence by remaining the authorizing entity, and not bypassing public health. And I think that's why, again, these rules to license an adoption agency are very important, because if you look at the rest of the bill, what it's doing is authorizing an adoption agency to pretty much go around public health's authority, to become, in many instances, the authority in place of public health. And that's, I absolutely agree with public health's concerns on that.
Point of information, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of information.
The statement that somehow these adoption agencies can go over the authority of child protective services and public health is absolutely false. This bill gives full authority and control to public health. It doesn't take away from anything that's already in statute. The adoption procedures are mandated in statute and the garb by CPS, all the statutes that CPS adheres to, and the courts. No adoption agency, and I want to reiterate what I had said before when this point was raised, no adoption agency can take a baby that is not allowed by public health, by CPS. CPS has full authority to either accept or deny. It's not automatic. So that is blatantly false, and may I just read from, from Director Barron's to that point?
Objection, Madam Speaker. This sounds like debate to me, and I respect the opportunity to debate, and I would just like to conclude with my opportunity.
It's fine, it's just in furtherance of my point, that it's in the words of the director, but if that's the desire, I believe that the director very clearly makes her position known, and that the authority over adoption agencies is not vetted in the adoption agencies, that's just profoundly absurd.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Because I've been accused of being patently false, I would like to read points in this bill that actually take away from public health's authority. Some of these were discussed earlier in amendments. One is, instead of an adoption selection committee, selection committee comprised of public health, adoption supervisors, caseworkers, adoption caseworkers, social workers, this bill creates another position for an adoption agency, a voting position, I assume it's voting, because like, I don't know how they're going to make their determination, but I think that takes some authority away from public health, and in fact, that was objected to in public health's letter. They also ask, public health asks us, how is an adoption agency independent? We are allowing private or public, profit or nonprofit? They say in their testimony that putting the adoption agency as part of this selection committee would appear to be in conflict of competing interests. And as I said earlier, I can't see why, if they have a recommendation, they can't give these recommendations to public health, and public health do its regular process of screening those applicants, or screening those adoptive parents, or screening, you know, the child that is up for adoption and making sure that they match, as they're supposed to do according to all their statutes. It wouldn't, the bill as written allows custody of a child, we keep legal custody with public health, but it allows a child to go, if relinquished under the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act, to be placed, or to be taken out of the hospital by an adoption agency, and not by public health, or a social worker from public health, or the, or any part of the public health system. I could go on and on, but I want to stick to this one amendment. Public health's objection to it. And I don't think public health would be objecting to it if they thought this was going to relieve them of, you know, in a good way. Because we all recognize public health is overworked, we recognize that they have a crisis on their hands. We have had a crisis for years when it comes to children in emergency situations, and I want to commend public health for sticking to their policy, because it's written in the law. And that's another reason why we need written rules and regulations, because they are sticking to this policy as a matter of law. And this will be the first time we will depart from that. Their policy, or the policy of legislatures before us, was that there is a, a high desire on Guam to keep families united, if at all possible. And when that is possible, public health goes out of their way to do that, to try to give what mothers what they need in order to raise these children, the resources they need, the support they need, the training they need, everything. They try to do that. They try to find family placements, that's why the number of family placements is the largest, because that has, that's their priority according to our statutes. And I would like to keep those priorities. I would like to help public health, and I don't, I think we can all help public health, help these babies to be relieved of trauma. I think these adoption agencies are perfectly capable of working together with public health and not bypassing them, Madam Speaker. And so, but if they are going to be allowed by this bill to bypass them in any way, then I think rules and regulations are absolutely necessary, and public health has said the same thing, put the rules and regulations down so that public health can say yes or no, you meet the criteria or you don't. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Terahy. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, notwithstanding any of the rules that we have with regards to the discussion, and I'm not standing here for or against this amendment, but I, but in, in the discussion of this amendment as well, it keeps referencing to a letter sent by the, an individual who is the deputy director of public health. I think it's imperative that this body to be able to find out whether or not that, that letter represents, whether or not that is the position of public health, Department of Public Health Social Services, or is that a position of an individual employed as a deputy director? And then, for me, that makes a significant difference in, in as far as what that position is. Because at the end of the day, if this bill passes, there's obviously going to be a number of things that is going to be tasked to the Department of Public Health. Absent the bill, they've brought to light many of the issues already that they're confronting with. So I think it is imperative on this body to be able to hear for themselves, is this your official position or not? So I ask for that consideration, Madam Chair. And I think that consideration is, is key, imperative for us to be able to move forward just on, just on this amendment alone, let alone the bill. I think that everybody, we all agree, that providing a means for adoption, and a means that is safe, that we, as much as we can, we can recognize that all parties, most especially the child, is in safe hands. And I believe that's what this bill provides, that's what this bill offers. But this bill has also offered a number of discussions, and one of the discussions that we have now that's, that's very pressing, and that seems to be a priority of importance, is this letter. It concerns me, ma'am, yes, and it does concern me a little bit, that this letter comes from an individual who's a director of public health, and I know the guy, I know Terry. But is this the official position of the Department of Public Health, or is this a position that he's providing as an individual? That's, that's imperative, and we need to know that. Because if this is the position of the Department of Public Health, what are they doing about it? So I'm asking for that consideration, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
On the amendment, Vice Speaker Barnes, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, if I may, just to echo the sentiments of the previous speaker asking what the, if there could be a consideration here, just recently, as it relates to the coverage of children on foster care, there was an information that went out by one of the administrators in public health, but that was not the position of, of the director. So in the efforts of just hearing the previous speaker, I too will rise to a point of consideration to get the perspective from the director of public health. Sinamasi.
Senator, is that a motion? The earlier speaker did not make a motion, so we could clarify, are you making a motion?
Madam Speaker, before, maybe, maybe just a moment's recess, so that I can get the verification of the previous speaker on that consideration.
Sure, one minute recess.
Madam Speaker, if I may. Madam Speaker, if I may.
We're back from recess. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, in, in the interest of time and the interest of getting the information, maybe just to, at this time, do a motion to temporarily set aside until we get information from the director of public health and the agency itself in reference to this matter. So on that motion, please.
Motion to set aside the bill, Bill 108, temporarily, or, and move on to another bill? If you could clarify your motion, please. Motion to set aside temporarily Bill 108, move on to the next bill until we get clarification from public health.
Until that clarification is made. Sinamasi, Madam Speaker.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, Bill 108, and then there's Bill 109 that is very similar to each other, discussed about adoption as well. So I recommend that if we do set aside, we set aside both bills because it does have a companion with each other.
Senator, Vice Speaker, would you clarify your motion? Is it on Bill 108, or on both 108 and 109? Yes.
If she's doing the amendment to the motion, then we would have to entertain.
Okay, so on that amendment, no, just, we're going to just have to take one motion here. So, Vice Speaker, it's your motion.
I guess on the motion to set aside Bill 108 at this time, temporarily, Madam.
All right. On that motion, set aside 108.
I'd like to make amendment to that motion to also include Bill 109.
Yes, we're going to take the motion on 108 without amendment. So on the motion to set aside Bill 108 temporarily and move on to the next bill, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 109, and Senator Torres, you're the sponsor, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move at this time to set aside Bill 109 temporarily, pending receipt of additional testimony from public health that we are anticipating at any moment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion to set aside Bill number 109, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Point of informa-
Please state your point of information.
Actually, it's a, it's a question more, Madam Speaker, that we, if we are calling in the director, that we also include the deputy director who wrote this letter that needs to come down to as well, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Madam Speaker, I make a motion that we also include the deputy general, deputy manager of, I'm sorry, deputy director of public health, Terry again, to also be present if-
I don't think there's a motion to have anybody present. The motion was to set aside the bills until further clarification.
I stand corrected, Madam Speaker. Thank you so much.
All right, we're now on Bill number 134 under second reading, Bill number 134-36COR. Primary sponsor is Senator Clinton Rigel. Senator Rigel, you are recognized on Bill number 134.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. All right, I move to place Bill 134-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities in the Arts, introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Joe S. Nagasin, Jose Pito Terlahe, V. Anthony Adatello, T. Titigui, and James C. Moylan, an act to amend Section 60354 of Article III, Chapter 60, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to removing the minimum acreage for protection of farms to the third reading file to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is a pretty, in my opinion, simple bill, very straightforward measure. It's really not a long bill at all. In fact, it really only consists of a strike through of one phrase. And what this bill does is just amending the farm protection portions in current law. This farm protection section in current law does exactly what it says. It's, it's meant to protect farms in the event that zoning may change around farms, or the invent, in the event that land use around, surrounding lands around farms changes. The idea is to prevent zoning changes from changing the ability to farm a piece of property. I guess I'll give an example. Let's say you own a farm, and then all of a sudden, the surrounding landowners are able to change the zoning, change the usage of their properties, and start developing commercial properties, for example, all around the farm. Sometimes, you know, when that happens, it, it may look weird, and because you've got a farm in the middle surrounded by commercial properties, or whatever the other use of the property is. And sometimes those other landowners will try to force the farm owner to sell the farm, or to give up the farm, or move away, or, or change the zoning of the land so that they can't use it for agricultural purposes anymore, because it doesn't seem to fit with the other surrounding pieces of property. So what this bill does is it protects farmers in the event that surrounding properties' usages are changed. And it says that basically no one can prevent that farmer from continuing to farm on their property and continuing to use it. So all this bill really does is extend that protection to the smallest of farmers. Right now, the way that the current law is worded, it says that "A farm for purposes of this section shall be farmland used for bona fide agriculture as defined in 60102 of this chapter, and which encompasses over one-half acre in size. No person who is engaged in agricultural use of farmland may be forced or required to stop such farming activities because of changes in the usages of surrounding lands, nor because of zoning changes." That's what the current law says. All my bill does is strike through the words "and which encompasses over one-half acre in size." The idea is just to eliminate the size requirement. And the reason for this is perhaps back when this original law was created, farms tended to be on larger pieces of properties. But now there's definitely been a movement towards smaller farming, and a lot of that's been made, made possible through advances in farming techniques, advances in, in farming technology, advances in farming knowledge. People now realize that they can get a pretty decent yield off of even just a quarter acre property. There's a lot of examples of this across the nation. There is a move towards these smaller farms across the nation. So what this does is just, again, allow that to happen here on Guam, so that if a small farmer, regardless of the size of their lot, will be protected and won't be forced to stop farming if the, if the surrounding land usage changes, or if the zoning changes in the surrounding lands. So with that, again, I think it's a pretty straightforward, very simple bill, and this is a measure that came through discussions with the Guam Department of Agriculture. They pointed out that this is something they felt which would help local farmers, and that's a big part of, a big part of my platform, and a big part of why I ran for office was really to work on improving the agriculture on Guam, improving the agricultural industry on Guam, and helping to further develop the agriculture industry while also supporting small farmers. So with that, Madam Speaker, I ask for my colleagues' support on the measure. Again, it's just a strike through of one line that removes the size requirement for this farm protection section of law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, Vice Speaker, you are recognized on the bill.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 134-36COR, and I'd like to thank the good author from Telefofa for giving me, or, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of his co-sponsorship. And as I share his same sentiments, Madam Speaker, I just want to say that this bill's intent is to remove that acreage requirement of over one-half acre in size in order to protect farms of all sizes. And as we protect all the farms, farmers' right to farm, modern farming methods today, some will know that technology has been really nifty, and something like hydroponics don't need big acreage of farmland. That's something my son has been working on, hydroponics, it's something that we thought the, even our children and our grandchildren could get involved in. For me, this, this legislation will include those types of farmers, an innovation, and when the fiscal report came in, it said it had no fiscal impact. So this bill is very good as we continue to advocate for the farmers, as we continue to work closely with the Oversight Chair who has a hands-on relationship, always talking to the farmers. I think this was one of their asks also, and, and this is a good thing for our farmers here on Guam. So, Wun Dukul and Sisus Massey, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this, and I ask my colleagues to please support Senator Rigel's efforts also. Sinamasi.
Sinamasi, on the bill. Is there anyone else? Oh, sorry, Senator Blas, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the, the measure, as was provided by the retiring speaker, the lady from Pogo Bay. The, you know, farming has changed over the last few years, so has the technology, like was previously mentioned, you know, there's hydroponics and other technologies that create, you know, greater volume of lesser, lesser mass. We know and we recognize why it was, it was written as such in prior times, because that technology didn't exist. Today, there is, and as most, especially over the last 15 months, there has been a explosion of individuals who are interested in farming, and using up every piece of the land that they have in their, basically their quarter square lot that they, that they live on, to include some of them growing on top of the roofs. And it's giving them that opportunity to be able to, to, to partake in, in this industry, in the, in the ability to be able to, to, to grow, to be a part of, of the agriculture industry as such. And so, this measure is timely, this measure, I think, is, is also recognizes that there have been significant changes, improvements in that industry that provides us to be able to do this, and this measure will help to facilitate that process. So I am also in full support of this measure. I want to thank the author for bringing it up to as well.
Thank you. Senator, on the bill. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Titigui, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this measure. Though small, it's going to go a long way, you know, even though it's just a simple thing, it will reach bounds of, of improvement, and, and most especially encouragement of everyone, whether how small or larger property is, it's called sustainability. Madam Speaker, during the, during COVID, and the lockdown that we all experienced, and pretty much, we also experienced empty shelves in the grocery stores and certain products, we definitely went through an eye-opener on the ability to sustain ourselves, being a small island. We, we forgot one of the most important things that would keep us alive, and that is food, and be able to produce food. This is just the beginning. I'm sure the author, the good author, who, who said he ran on, on these reasons, you know, for agriculture and the production of, of, of food that brings sustainability to our island. I think there's going to be more legislation that'll probably come our way, and that would entice the next generation, that farming is a great trait, it's an admirable one. And it's definitely one that would bring that security that is needed in a time of, well, we went through a pandemic, and wondering where our next meal is going to come from, or if they're going to, ships are going to come in, or the planes are going to come in to provide us this food. We've experienced it, we've learned from it, and now let's do something about this, and that is legislation that would encourage and provide the support these farmers currently need. So I thank you, the author, for the opportunity and always to be a part of his legislation when it comes to agriculture, and look forward to the next piece of legislation that it brings out to, to provide that boost for our island so we're never put in a situation like that again. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I close, I'd like to make a motion to add as a co-sponsor, Senator Frank Blas, Jr.
On that motion to add Senator Blas' co-sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And in closing, again, a pretty simple, straightforward bill, and as the retiring speaker mentioned, this is a pretty simple, straightforward bill, and there are other pieces of legislation that I, I'm working on to deal with agriculture. So yes, definitely I'll be back before this body with more pieces of agriculture legislation. Again, this is pretty straightforward, it removes the acreage requirement, the size requirement, excuse me, for farm protection, and it's kind of like, you know, those old Hollywood movies where you see the small farmer, and then all of a sudden, all of these commercial properties prop up around his small farm, and little by little, the commercial properties, you know, whatever they may be, try to force him out of his farm, and sometimes they get to the point where they get the city to start bearing down city ordinances on the farmer, to try to push him off his farm and get him off his farm because it just doesn't fit with the commercial properties in the surrounding area. Well, this makes sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen, that they can't be forced off their farm regardless of the size of the farm. So with that, Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues for their, those who spoke in support, and for my co-sponsors for their support as well, and ask for the full support of the body as I move this, make a motion to move this bill to the voting file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place Bill 134-36COR to the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill 136-36COR. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 136-36COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities in the Arts, introduced Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. It's introduced by myself, Therese M. Terlahe, and it's an act to amend, Section 7120 of Chapter 7, Title 7, Guam Code annotated, relative to the preservation and disposition of court records. I'd like to move that this be placed into the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey. Bill 136 was amended by the committee, pretty much in consideration of the technical recommendations made by the Legislative Legal Bureau. No other substantive changes were made to it in the committee. And on October 2020, the judiciary submitted Resolution Number 20-030, which is relative to approving proposed legislation amending Section 7120 of Title 7, Guam Code annotated, on the preservation and disposition of court records. The resolution states that the judiciary is in the process of implementing a judiciary-wide document management system, which is intended to reduce the need for the costly physical storage of documents and enhance accessibility to court documents. So currently, Section 7120C of Title 7 prohibits the destruction of an original court document, even if such an original document has been copied to a photograph or microphotograph or reproduced on film or in a computerized form. The cost to the judiciary for the physical storage of original court records has become prohibitive as the volume of such documents continues to grow. So technology is available to ensure the safe, permanent storage of electronic copies of court records. So this bill would accordingly assist the judiciary in enhancing its accessibility to court records while still preserving these documents in a different format, in a more cost-effective format. And I'm, you know, during the public hearing, I was very curious what types of formats they would be using, because I am sure that this problem, this issue, is being faced by other departments and agencies across the government. We've, we just saw the DeWitt fire that apparently had held government records as well. We here at the legislature, I believe, you know, have always struggled with preserving these historic documents, yet it is, you know, it takes up space, it's expensive, and we've lost so many over the years because of typhoons and termites and really just trying to avoid the costs of the more expensive types of storage. So I'm thinking that if this is going to be able, you know, if this is acceptable for official court records, that perhaps we can, after this, take a look at it for, you know, other entities, for example, the legislature and other agencies. But anyway, so the bill, what it does is, it allows, and it just says, the different ways that they can store it, including digitized forms, and then they say that the digitized reproduction, the photograph or the microphotograph, shall be deemed to be an original record for all purposes in the courts, including introductionist evidence. And so that's what this bill would do, and then it would allow them, the Supreme Court of Guam, to determine rules of disposing those documents that have been digitized. So that would be the bill, and I ask my colleagues to please consider support of this bill. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to ask the sponsor of the bill if I can ask a question with regards, so I certainly have no argument, and support the bill with regards to the digitization of the records, because certainly over the years, you know, it becomes voluminous. But if I could, if the sponsor would yield, I just wanted to ask a question.
Please take your question.
Speaker Terlahe, I wanted to inquire if there would be a period of time, that's not specified in the bill, but between the time that these documents are digitized, just so that there is a verification process, you know, to ensure that we don't lose permanent record in the event that it's not properly scanned and recorded? I mean, how do we do that? Because there are so many documents, you know, those of us that have run agencies have been in the situation of working to get hard copies digitized for record-keeping service. And then, of course, we have permanent records that we have to keep over time. We've heard time and time again in government agencies, sometimes these things are left and they, you know, deteriorate, the termites get into them. So we know the need to protect them, but is there going to be any way to verify, to ensure that those permanent records are properly digitized? Because once the original paper documents are destroyed, how would we ever be able to recover that? What is a safe gap measure, I guess, that is put in place or will be put in place to make sure that, you know, we don't lose anything? Because I know it's a large volume of documents that need to be digitized. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to ask that question.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And Speaker Terlahe, would you like to address that?
Yes, I'd be happy to yield to that question. And so my understanding of the bill is that it doesn't mandate that the courts digitize everything. It says they may digitize. And then it says that they're going to create rules that, of course, effectuate, you know, this law and allows, and that they're going to follow in digitizing, and rules that they're going to follow in destroying the original documents or disposal of those original documents. So I'm, I'm just, it doesn't say it in here, but I'm going to trust that the judiciary is going to be able to come up with rules before disposal of some kind of check and balances to make sure that we're disposing documents that have already been digitized. Excuse me. And again, because we're not mandating that they digitize it, I think that also, you know, they're going to have to be very conscious of which ones they're choosing not to digitize yet, for whatever reason. And I'm sure their rules will probably, you know, a lot of times be based on time constraints. So like currently, we, I think there are, well, anyways, I'm going to trust that the rules are going to be what flushes those answers out as to how do they know when they're disposing of a document that they've actually digitized it, and which documents will be prioritized for digitizing or not. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terlahe. Senator Brown, does that suffice? Thank you very much. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Speaker Terlahe, would you like to close?
Just to say thank you in advance to my colleagues for support on this and that I'm looking forward to this being done across the government. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Madam Speaker? Motion to place...
I reiterate my motion to place the bill in third reading.
On the motion to place Bill 136-36COR to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing no objections? Motion carries.
All right, colleagues. So we're now on Bill number 121-36COR. This is a bill that requires us to go into the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to pass this on file until tomorrow and proceed with the next?
Madam Speaker, are you looking at Bill 99 and 121 for the Committee of the Whole? I would only recommend that we do that tomorrow if we're going to do that, and that we'd ask my colleagues that we allow the authors of both bills to introduce their bill, make their opening, then we'll move to the Committee of the Whole.
We will pass on file, there's a motion to pass on file Bill number 99 and 121, which requires Committee of the Whole until tomorrow morning. And we will continue with the agenda then to consider Resolution Number, well, 94-36. So on that motion is to pass on file Bills 99 and 121, which require Committee of the Whole until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Resolution Number 94-36LS. Senator Flores, I mean, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to place Resolution 94-36LS as introduced in the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
It says, is it the version as introduced?
As introduced, yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, Resolution 94-36, it's relative to supporting the Government of Guam agency efforts to secure federal technical assistance and funding to eradicate snakes from Dono, also known as Coco's Island, to protect and recover Guahan's native species, and to commit to removing the brown tree snakes from Guahan. For more than 70 years, the brown tree snake has devastated Guahan's natural environment and has directly and indirectly affected our community, our way of life, and our culture. Dono, until recently, has been free of brown tree snake and has been a habitat for the recovery of the cocoa bird and a sanctuary for a number of listed species, some of which are no longer found in Guahan. During the public hearing, Celestino Ugin, former Division Head of Department, Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources, stated that Coco's Island is the last festage of Guam's wildlife in the wild. Resolution 94 calls for multilateral support of local and federal efforts to eradicate brown tree snake from Dono. Our agencies are doing everything they can with the limited resources that they have to address invasive species. The Government of Guam, Department of Ag, and Parks and Rec, for instance, manage the natural resources on Dono. And Department of Ag is also an active member of the brown tree snake research and control activities to prevent the spread of the snakes and restore Guahan's native ecosystem. Yet what this resolution does, it calls attention to the urgent need to direct our efforts and our resources in an even more concerted way towards Coco's Island, Dono. In fact, Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources, J. Gutierrez, stated, "Successful eradication of the brown tree snake from Dono is necessary. It is going to bring back our native species across Guahan." In order to do that, he went on to say, "We need to get the brown tree snake numbers as low as possible in order to have our native birds reproducing, and we can do that for Dono. It will be challenging, but not impossible. Our island has already previously received international praise and attention of the recovery of the cocoa bird, which is the only, which is the second bird in the world to come back from extinction in wildlife. This cannot have been possible if not for our efforts in Dono." What this resolution calls for, and what stakeholders say is needed, is a multi-year federal funding, resources which can be mobilized rapidly, and community empowerment and education in order to address brown tree snake eradication at the community level. With this, Dono once again has the potential to become an example at local, regional, and international levels of successful endemic and native species recovery and conservation efforts. The brown tree snake has caused devastating ecological impacts, especially to our native bird populations on the island of Guam, and now with its introduction to Dono, this threat is, has a potential to replicate these devastating impacts to not only our birds, but other native vertebrate populations. There has been reports of an 80% decline in the sully population. This is a call to action. And there are two outcomes at Dono, according to Dr. Haldr Rogers at Iowa State University. A successful effort there sets the stage for an eventual more complex eradication of snakes from larger areas in Guahan, or a failure on Dono, much like what happened in our island decades ago, which has led to the rapid decline of our native species. According to Rogers, there are five urgent points which need to be taken into consideration and which this resolution promotes. The urgency of an immediate and sustained response to the current outbreak, the realistic and achievable eradication of the brown tree snake in order to maintain bird population recovery, the necessity of rapid and responsive funding in order to make as big an impact as possible, the need for community involvement, and the necessity for biosecurity, education, outreach, and involvement to ensure, once eradication occurs, the brown tree snake does not, outbreak does not occur. Through Resolution 94, we can make brown tree snake eradication a legislative priority in order to ensure that Dono can once again become a safe habitat for our native and endemic species. We can send a statement to the world once again that Guahan's story cannot be reduced to the tragic and unfortunate introduction of the brown tree snake. Rather, our story is one of resilience and recovery, and despite odds, we will be able to bring back the cocoa bird and our native birds and all our endemic species that have been affected by the brown tree snake. Sisus Massey, I look forward to discussing the resolution. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, on the resolution, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the resolution? Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this resolution, and as a co-sponsor of the resolution, I think it's really important that we recognize the importance of the eradication of the brown tree snake from Coco's Island or its traditional indigenous name of Dono. So, prior to the discovery of the brown tree snake, which it was recently discovered on Coco's Island or island Dono, there were no brown tree snakes on the island. In fact, that's why it was selected as a site for reintroduction of the Guam rail or the cocoa, which is not only Guam's territorial bird, it's an endangered species. In fact, it's, it was considered as the author of this resolution, the primary sponsor, and retiring speaker mentioned it. It was, until recently, considered extinct in the wild, but because of the reintroduction of it into Coco's Island, that, that changed. It was considered to have a wild breeding population here on Guam, on Coco's Island or Dono. From everything I've heard over the years, the program was going great, the cocoa were flourishing, and then, all of a sudden, just not too long ago, some locals actually in the area, it actually turns out it was my brother-in-law, my Nia John, as well as my god, my godson, Robert, I'm going to give them credit here, and Robert's girlfriend, Tati, who were out fishing, and they actually noticed, they found a brown tree snake on the island. I believe they found snake skin first, and they turned that in to the authorities, and then that's what's launched the investigation into the island to actually see whether or not there were brown tree snake and what the, what the size of the population was. Since then, they determined there is a population of brown tree snake on the island, unfortunately. So now we've got to make sure we do something to address that population and get rid of that population on the island, just as, as the retiring speaker was saying, if we can't fix it there, we're not going to be able to fix it on the rest of the island of Guam. And ultimately, for me, and I believe, hopefully, many of our colleagues feel the same way, if not all of the colleagues feel the same way, I would hope, that our vision should be for an island of Guam where all of our native birds are restored. So this is just one step in that direction, is eliminating the brown tree snake on Coco's Island and resolving that this is something that we find important so that... Island and, and resolving that this is something that we find important so that the federal agencies involved will know that we take this seriously and that we want them to do their best to eliminate the brown tree snake. Now, some may say, well, why, you know, put this on the federal agencies? Well, it's because, it's no secret, it's the feds who brought the brown tree snake to Guam, likely on military cargo. Prior to the military, US military coming to Guam, there were no brown tree snakes. So, it's pretty well established that it is the military that brought it here. So, it's only fitting that the federal partners do as, everything they can to eliminate the brown tree snake, and I believe this resolution says that we find it extremely important to eliminate the brown tree snake, at least on this one island at first, before we can truly expand it to the rest of the island, so that one day, all of the native birds of Guam can be back in the wild and our skies will sing again. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker, you are recognized on Resolution 94-36.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of Resolution 94-36. And Madam Speaker, if I can just note to my colleagues here, I had sent something out this morning from, I would say historian Arlene Steffi, and, you know, when she had asked me to pass out this early findings, she said, "June 28, 2021, first fang black knotty chick to hatch at Malesu in Guam. This is a big deal for Malesu." She sends the photos, and I send it to all our colleagues, and she said, "Please pass it forward, please let everyone know." As we look at trying to preserve our native birds, and, and this resolution speaks about how many species we had here and almost gone to extinction, we finally have the opportunity to see the first fang hatchling in the village of Malesu, and I just want to say that, in those efforts, we know that this BTS, the brown tree snake, is one that continues to kill our native birds and other animals that are native to Guam. So, I rise in full support. I know in the past, the federal government has given funding sources to eradicate the brown tree snakes, but this is really, really important, especially because our community continues to try and save our native animals, our birds, our geckos, and all that is native to, animals that are native to Guam, and the brown tree snake is not one of those. And it's been invasive, and like the previous speaker said, we need to get rid of them, and I rise in support of this resolution and thank the author for taking the time to introduce the information in this resolution to this body, but also that the listening audience know that we've got to be able to bring back our native birds and our, everything that's native to Guam, and this is one way of doing it, and, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for letting me rise and speak in support of this Resolution 94-36. Sena Massey.
Sena Massey, Vice Speaker, Senator Taggigui, you are recognized on Resolution 94-36.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and, you know, I like to thank the author of this resolution, both authors and the co-sponsor as well, with regards to this resolution that will bring awareness, not only to this body, but I think to the public as well, and the importance of what is actually going on in a place where, when I was a very young girl living in Inalha, and we used to, you know, felt real big shots because we would go on my uncle's boat and go to what we call Coco's Island, just so that we can tell our friends, "Hey, I went off-island," you know, for, and they would all think we're a big shot, but Coco's Island was one of the places, or Dono, what it's now called, is a beautiful place, so pristine, you can go there when the tide is going out, and you can be walking on the sand dunes that just emerges all of a sudden when the tide goes down, it's like a whole different island that's attached to it. It's just amazing and beautiful. And now we're having an issue there, and I thank the author too, because I know that she's very passionate about the environment. And during the public hearing that we had on this, it was like who's who of environmentalists that were there, conservationists, even it brought out Celestine Ugin, you know, to come out and, and speak on this measure, I know he's somewhat retired, but the importance of it. Madam Speaker, I don't think this resolution just stops here, I think it's, the awareness is all that, they need assistance to eradicate the snake, the brown tree snake, from Coco's Island or Dono. And they're doing everything they can, but they need the funding to do this. Nonprofit organizations can kind of somewhat help, but it was said by the Department of Agriculture, that would probably be easiest, or no, yeah, someone from, not the director, but someone from Department of Agriculture saying that it's easier if money would come through a nonprofit to assist on purchasing all the things they need. One of the things was like a flashlight, you would think it's so simple, a flashlight costing, you know, 30 bucks or something, but some of these flashlights that they use at night cost up to somewhere around the line of $400 for this. They need camping gear, and then you have those who are coming out to Coco's Island as volunteers to assist. And, and things like that do, do cost some money. So during the public hearing, if my colleagues didn't have a chance to review the script, the transcripts on it or view it, then you can see that there is going to be a need, not just a resolution like this, but there's going to be a need to assist these individuals to help eradicate the snake from, from Dono or Coco's Island, as I finally remember it. So I'd like to do everything I can and hopefully during budget time that we can provide some kind of assistance that we do to other nonprofit organizations, especially for something like this. So I, I thank, again, the author and the co-sponsor for this resolution, and I humbly ask that I be a co-sponsor to us on the resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, Senator Brown, you are recognized on Resolution 94-36.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of Resolution 94-36. You know, over the years, prior to the, you know, the snake, brown tree snake being reintroduced back into Coco's Island, you know, I remember back in the 80s, many of us would go there because they had the bungalows, and then the early 90s, we had a super typhoon that essentially wiped all that out, wiped out most of the vegetation, large vegetation on the island, and pretty much reconfigured the boundaries of what we knew as, as Coco's Island or Donos, as the original name refers to the island. I was also, I had the opportunity when I was working at the University of Guam with conservation to go out there with our members who were doing planting of native, our native trees, back to the side of Coco's Island, because, you know, the left side, when we're looking out for Marito, is the resort side, and the right side is, is looked at as the public, public land side of the island, and a lot of effort was put into that. I think we're all saddened to hear about the reintroduction of the brown tree snake, because we've seen in our generation, our lifetime, how destructive the brown tree snake has been to our native bird population. I certainly support these efforts, I appreciate the introduction by both Senator Sabina and Senator Clint in sponsoring this resolution so that we can address it. Hopefully, if we can once again address the eradication of the brown tree snake from the island, we can continue to expand the reintroduction of our native bird species. I think that's something we'd all like to see in our generation, because in our time, we've seen what the negative impacts have been. You know, our children now don't know what it's like to see a cocoa bird outside of a cage. You know, that's something the early days, we actually were able to see in our time. So I certainly support this, I think it's important, you know, at the end of the day, our natural resources are very important to our island, important to the future, and certainly for the generations that come after us. So, congratulations to the sponsor, I also hope to be considered as a co-sponsor to this resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there any other person who'd like to be recognized? Senators, Sen Augustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank the author and the co-sponsor of the resolution. And I like the parts, you know, the different parts in the resolution when it talks about, let's begin with Dono, Coco's Island, and then show the example that we can eradicate the brown tree snake on Guam. And if that needs to be the example, then so be it. And hopefully, Uncle Sam, which Senator Pedro and I are both retired of the United States' Armed Forces, Uncle Sam will do their part, like one of my colleagues brought up, the military brought it, well, military come out here and clean it up. And when you, when you take care of the snakes, hopefully, the other parts that the Coast Guard destroyed or contaminated, they can clean that up while they're at it. And this make Dono be as beautiful as it was when I used to go down to Marito when I was a lot younger, and that was just several years ago. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to be a co-sponsor of the resolution.
Senator Shelton. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the resolution?
On the resolution, Speaker Terla, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wasn't going to speak on this resolution, but I didn't want to miss out on all the fun. And I did see that, I'm glad that the vice speaker brought up that, the birds that we have witnessed nesting on the shores of Malesu right now, and if you haven't seen it, I would encourage everyone to go down there and see it. It's really, they're loud, it's beautiful, and the pictures that were sent last night by Arlene Steffi show, show the baby birds that were born now, so you can, they're in the nest, and those are, that's what she was showing in her pictures. And of course, so, we have much to celebrate from our successes, especially, you know, from, in, in Dono. However, yeah, when the news of the snakes being found there was made public, that is, I, I am sure, very depressing for those who have spent years and years of their lives trying to ensure that that does not happen, to take care of these endangered species and, and to, to really nurture them. And I have a friend of mine who considers like his babies, you know, these, these animals to continue to raise them, but, but anyways, I wanted to stand in support of the resolution. And just from reading the testimony that was given at the public hearing, you know, I take some hope, because we've lost a lot of hope here on Guam after much money has been put into the eradication of brown tree snakes. We don't see the dent, right? We've seen huge projects for brown tree snakes only. I remember when they put up the fences at Retidi, and, and, you know, the fences with the curves, saying that was all for the brown tree snake. We've even, you know, even access was restricted, all for the brown tree snake, but now you can see those, those fences are not serving that purpose at all, there is, there are holes in them, there, it just was not sustained, I guess, beyond a certain timeframe by, by those federal resources. And so this resolution is an attempt to, to seek resources as much as possible beyond Guam, but, and so I support that, and I, I hope that it is successful and that we can do this very quickly so that we can mobilize. But I want to thank those who acted very quickly when they did see snakes, and that they reported it, and that they killed them, and that, and those who have been diligent all these years in their boating practices to ensure that they were not the ones bringing these snakes over there. But I just want to point out a couple efforts that I think all of, all of the people of Guam might want to be aware of and, and join in if they can. And that is, so Joni Takere, she's the associate professor at Guam Community College, head of the GCC Eco Warriors, she's also the coordinator of the Marianas Terrestrial Conservation Conference, and that just took place, and, and a new nonprofit called Tonu Toszi Zantoru. Anyways, one, parts of her testimony talk about what, what people can do, what volunteers can do, and that they need volunteers, because the most effective way, and she said, you know, is going to involve the community as a whole, that they need on-the-ground visual surveys, that's going to be the best method to capture the snake, not snake traps with live or dead mice, and not mice pups laced with acetaminophen, and that the agencies responsible for going out and doing the visual surveys, that they are overwhelmed. And so that's why we are looking for community volunteers, and that the resources that are needed are to pay for transportation back and forth across with the boats, gasoline, equipment for the volunteers, including lights, headlamps, snake sticks, and the training, which she claims is easy to be trained in how to kill a snake. But I'm glad that, and then it calls on boaters, of course, to be, you know, retrained in how to examine their boats to make sure that, that all of us are doing our part, but I, I got a kick that she spelled out these efforts here, and that if we volunteer to help, that, you know, that's what's going to entail. However, I want, I want to thank the sponsor for pointing out that this resolution, hopefully the passage of it, is going to help us, it's going to help the agencies, it declares that the eradication of the brown tree snake from Dono Coco's Island be determined as a priority legislative action. And so I'm hoping that that will help in the grants that these agencies are seeking, it will help in inviting, enticing volunteers to assist these agencies, and it would help, you know, all of us in the community to be motivated. And I think if you need some motivation, just go down to Malesu and check out the birds that are nesting right near the kumbento, near the belt, across the bell tower. It's very, really a very, it's exciting that, you know, we have seen some success. And so I would, I would like, it's very sad to read the testimony about how the Sully has declined in population on Coco's recently, and so, you know, this is urgent, and I want to thank the sponsor of this resolution, and I stand in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Terla. Anyone else on the resolution? If not, the sponsor may close.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I really would like to thank all my colleagues for their support, very touched by that. And I, I also basically want to highlight the importance of this resolution. And I also want to thank Department of Agriculture, Diane Weiss, Director, Charles Munir Brack, and all those at Department of Ag, and those in the community, Dr. Haldr Rogers, Joni Kerr, and many of those, Celestino Ugin, who endorsed this resolution. I think it's so important, this resolution is so important because it's going to engender not only federal technical support, but also the combination of community support. And what we gain from this is the, the practices that we can apply to our island of Guahan. And I've just been very fortunate, I just want to share, very fortunate to see birds in the wild in Tinian, and it's so inspiring to see the chicharica, to see the fruit doves, yeah, and the aga. It's, it's really, it's really inspiring to see them, and, and like you said, Madam Speaker, we have this opportunity to see birds in the wild with the, the black knotty that are nesting in the trees right now. And I think just what, what we can give, we can get back in, in multiples. The amount, the effort that we put into conservation, we will see the fruits of our labor reconnecting with our island and our heritage, which is so important. I think that, you know, like many of my colleagues that have said, it is, there's a sort, a sense of hope, if we can combine our efforts to restore what was lost.
a sort, a sense of hope, if we can combine our efforts to restore what was lost. And we need to use these efforts very urgently to address the eradication efforts at Dano. And again, my hope is too, that Moleso could be, um, as, an extended sanctuary of Dano, to restore these native populations. Imagine seeing the cocoa bird in your backyard, the seahack, and many others, the fruit dove. And this, in fact, was one of the plans of Department of Ag, that they were going to reintroduce the seahack in the wild at Kokos Island, but because of the brown tree snake, that got, um, deterred. So again, I, I ask for the support of my colleagues, and thank, thank you for the support from my colleagues, and ask the support of our community, and all our federal partners, to ensure that this eradication effort is a success. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, on, oh, Senator Parrish, you're still recognized?
My apologies, um, I would like to make an amendment to add co-sponsors. Um, so, uh, Senator Telotatigui is the third, uh, Senator Joanne Brown is the fourth, and I would like to also add Vice Speaker Tina Minnie Barnes, Speaker Therese Terlahi, Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Shelton, Senator Pito Terlahi. And I believe, I didn't miss anyone, okay, I think, believe that's it, and, um...
On that motion, is there any objection to the adding of co-sponsors? Seeing no objection. Does that motion, uh, can you clarify if that includes Senator Blos?
Um, yes, I believe, he didn't respond, so I'm not too sure, um, at this point. Let me, let me double-check. Yeah, um, if there's no, um, yeah, if he disagrees, uh, if no disagreement, I would add him to as well.
All right, uh, so on that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place it in the third reading file.
On the motion, place Resolution Number 94-36 LS, as amended on the third reading file. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, colleagues, so, we are, we are, um, uh, so our agenda now is, we've got Bills 99, Bill 121, and then the two bills, 108 and 109, that were set aside, and so that will be how we proceed tomorrow. We will begin with the Committee of the Whole with Bills 99 and 121. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Is there any announcement prior to that?
Uh, sure, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to invite all of our colleagues here to join, uh, me at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning for a resolution in celebration of Philippine Independence Day.
Sisus Massey, Senator Shelton, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection, the legislature's in recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning.